The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their all ugly religious sins, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The members of the board have received the minutes from the previous board meeting and ask for motion for approval.
I think we should approve the minutes from August.
Sir, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Personnel?
First item on personnel this evening, the approval for Gayla Porch to as our Title I teacher.
I'll make a motion to approve Gayla Porch for Title I teacher.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved.
Second item, Sarah Satoski. She is going to be half the day our high ability teacher, a certified physician, and half the day a paraprofessional.
I'll make a motion to approve Sarah Satoski.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved.
And then approval for the, uh, uh, we had previously approved a summer pay rate for student help in the summer. We wanted to change that to make it a range between eight and ten dollars. So approval for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the adjustment to student pay for the summer rates.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved.
Approval for Hayden Belles as our seventh and eighth boys basketball coach.
Motion approved.
I'll abstain.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved.
Aaron McMeans as the fifth, sixth boys basketball coach.
I'll make a motion to approve Aaron McMeans as the fifth and sixth boys basketball coach.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
And then I have one more I've got to add in prior to the Monday meeting. You'll recall, a month ago, we had approved Austin Heiss's resignation as our Spanish teacher, but he came back to us prior to the start of the school year. So I need approval to rehire him as our Spanish teacher.
Motion approved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion approved. For lots of thing doctors. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved. And for your information, balance sheet.
I see guys' legacy lives on the.
Paper.
Paper.
It, it's cut down quite a bit.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yes. So that's what, it was a little scary what guys do. But I think we've got another forty pages.
Twenty-five.
Just on this?
Oh, no.
Any questions as the balance sheet? We'll keep moving on to the public comments. Are there any public comments?
I got a question. It's not on the agenda, but it's about renting a classroom in the, in the old high school building. Is that possible for a continuing education class? Like one night, a list of one night.
We will. Uh, did you grab an agenda?
Yeah.
Write you, write that inquiry down on that and hand it to me.
Okay.
Cause what we do then is at the end of the night, the question, if there's questions regarding agenda items or to this case, not an agenda, then I'll email back to the group in attendance. So if you'll add an email address.
Okay.
Then I can give everybody the same answer to that question. And that would require a little investigation, I think, on our part.
Sure.
Yep.
We got one that's not on the agenda too. Uh, how much damage did that have on the bus?
Damage on the bus?
On the bus? Got the, that down the river.
Yes, uh, the, that, the one bus on a Friday, a bus got rear rented, about thirty thousand dollars damage following Monday, a tree fell on the bus. So I'm waiting on that one. That one just, I just got it to Plymouth today. So we've had a little bad luck on school buses. Very short currently on school buses.
Jim.
So I noticed coming in, there was a head with a scratch and it's low.
So in the hallway?
Yeah.
Write it down. I'll, I'll figure out who can.
I'm just curious, you can see where this crack? It's pretty good last time I was here and I noticed the aquatic glitter and the green shells. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on that agenda?
Um, how are enrollment numbers this year? Are they up or are they down?
They are up. I'll, and I will talk in good detail about that later. I'll be able to give you an exact figure.
Thank you for these questions. Um, so we'll move on to the next section on the education budget hearing. And this kind of like the ask for motion of open the hearing on education budget. Hearing motion of education budget.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We therefore are open on our hearing on education budget. Are there any questions coming on this this evening?
What type of changes are we looking at this year?
It's really the same information that we went through with board in the work session from last month. Um, so the debt service fund, we are advertising nineteen cents. A year ago, we advertised fifteen and a half cents. Operations fund, we are advertising, uh, just under seventy cents. And a year ago, we advertised a little under sixty cents.
Further questions about the board? Make a motion to close the education budget. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next plan I have to see if we believe the capital projects plan hearing. Are there any motions that are sort of open?
I can motion to open the public, the capital projects hearing.
I'll second it.
Hearing is now open for public comments. Are there any questions?
We, and with the capital projects money we use for.
So we've got a roof, tackling our roof needs is what we've got sitting there on our capital projects.
Was that the only thing on there currently?
Currently, that's all it's listed.
Any further public comments? Public or board? Motion to vote. Make a motion for the capital project hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you move it on?
Who, who had the second on that, please?
Derek.
Bus replacement plan hearing. Do you have a motion for the board to open the hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the, uh, uh, bus replacement plan.
I'll second that.
Hearing is now open. Are there any public comments on the bus replacement plan?
Is this the, uh, so I've decided what we're doing with the, uh, with the bus yet then, that had the great rate damage?
Uh, we actually got good news on that today. We, the insurance adjuster from our insurance caught a total loss. Jack. That's what I was hoping for a fourteen, twenty-fourteen bus. Already had some money into it. I didn't forget it like that.
We're still going to keep the bus?
We're, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let them take the bus and then we'll pay us out and put that towards the new bus then.
In other words, you're telling them to bring the bus frame off.
That was my concern.
I imagine a bus when it gets hit like that, if you look underneath a school bus and see how it's matted to the frame, it's, yeah.
For the school.
Yeah.
And further questions?
And what I guess did, what do you, what's your outlook for the sunroof, uh, bus?
Yeah, I have no idea because that's a little different. I don't know whether they can just take that, uh, windshield's shattered, um, hole this bigger out. Well, that one's here. If you care to take a look at it, you're welcome to. Hole about this bigger round in the top, some other dents and dings.
Oh, I did get it to the hood, didn't I?
Yeah, but never mind, you can't look at it. It was much harder to find. Um, they hit it off street. But it's a twenty. That bus is only two years old. So what, you know, insurance, be the decipher.
That's the R insurance right now though?
Yeah.
Maybe they could rent it better.
See, I already forgot what I did.
I'll make a motion to close the, uh, the bus hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll continue moving on to the twenty twenty-three capital projects plan that we just thought of. Now I ask for motion for approval of the capital projects plan. Make a motion to approve the capital projects plan for twenty twenty-three.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved. And next would be the twenty twenty-three bus replacement plan. Motion for, motion approved, the twenty twenty-three bus replacement plan.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved.
Uh, the number twelve, Trico, the roof update. So, uh, last week, we had a pre-bid meeting and I believe I sent this to you in school board in an email. We had three responders and it was Corales, Gluth Brothers, and it was, I didn't.
I did recognize the name.
The other one I didn't recognize either, but we got three respondents and they're sealed bids are due Thursday of this week. Uh, and so Trico is walking us through that process and, uh, we'll, we'll see how, how those bids turn out then.
Tom Linklater, or what's his name?
Yeah, Tom Linklater.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He basically will evaluate.
Yep. They, and an engineer. He and, I love, he and, uh, an outside engineer that they've also hired will help evaluate the three bids.
Gotcha.
And that's for the, the, uh, will take a very large bite out of our roof system and it's the one that needs it the most. This main hall through here where Scott's fighting a lot of leaks continually, depending on which way the rain comes from. That's going to be priority number one. So.
Just one question. Not going to wind up like in the port and just gotta work on, uh, what they call it, the old Al Samba used to be. Found out that he was paying Scott Weaver to do it, not pulling anything out. It's one thing I'd be concerned about hiring Scott.
I know that, I'm pretty sure that two of the companies are union companies.
Yeah.
The two you guys said, yeah, the third one might be one of them.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I, I've never heard of the third one. I'm.
Yeah, Todd, I mean, Todd, Trico will definitely know.
Yeah.
So that was for information there. More information coming Thursday. I'll email the group. Um, thirteen, enrollment update. I'm very happy to report that exactly one year to the day, we are up ten students.
Great.
As of today. Um, and I have an email actually between myself and the newspaper where I got that information from on this day a year ago. So.
That's not including pre-K.
So we're up ten kids, not including pre-K. So K twelve, we're up ten, including pre-K, we're up twelve. Cause this year we have twenty-nine pre-K kids currently. We have twenty-seven on this day a year ago. So that's very good. Free ten, that's very good. Now after the bus route had to, tomorrow it might be three oh nine, but as of today, it's three ten. I'm good. Uh, that's the enrollment.
Uh, fairly well distributed throughout the grades. Or, or should I say variation, big class, small class.
Yeah, we still have, we got, we got a small group going through our fifth grade.
Fifth grade.
But we've, we've picked up one or two.
They started the, yeah, they started the year eleven, they're fourteen.
Yeah. So that's our small group. And then, uh, what's our biggest right now? The elementary.
Second grade has thirty.
Yeah. Uh, very pleased to be up, up ten. Yeah. I was surprised to look and see on the thirteenth, a year ago, that I had information I could point to. So that's a, that's good then.
Was that, is D-Day for the, for the count then?
Uh, this week.
Right.
Friday. Yeah, at the end of this week then. So yeah.
I do know for a living, yeah, you're right.
No, hold on. Today was straight two. We'll get straight three and left. Um, yeah, if you've seen a kid wandering around, get them in before Friday. It would be much appreciated. Uh, item number fourteen, investment update. Um, you've got in your packet. I don't give a lot of credit to Dara for getting this done for me. Now today was a really good day. This afternoon was for a lot of reasons, but the information you've got in here is already old because it was from yesterday. So if you look at the, the one-year CD that we got at three point five percent, today that's already three point seven five percent. So we're getting the better rate. And before we get the deal closed, that might be higher than that. But by investing this money while we're waiting to have things to spend on, as we know that we're not going to have dollars flowing out for the roof for quite some time. So in the meantime, now the CD rates have really taken off again. We're looking at being able to bring in about an extra fifty grand by the time we need these funds to start paying them for some upkeep. So I think that's a wise move on our part. Yeah, and they do have, but the, today's rates are here. So if anybody wants to check those out. They're going in the right direction for that money. Um, now I'm gonna.
We need an extra, extra little bit of paperwork for the financial, um.
No, we just probably do go like.
Sure.
Yep.
Make a motion to, for the transfer funds.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved.
Yeah, I appreciate the time. That makes it a little bit tighter. That was just, um. I'm gonna, Brian, before I come to you on principal report, I'm gonna jump down. I might've got it right on the public's agenda, but I, I left off board meeting dates. So this is just your first reading for next year's board meeting dates. So I'll point that out to you before you get it. And, uh, Brian?
Okay, um, let's see. Uh, girls cross country won the fourth one in a night, um, a few weeks ago, beginning of the year. Am I doing that part? Are you doing that part?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna be fine if you go with it.
Okay, okay.
I'll jump into.
Uh, so in early August, uh, Mrs. Martin came to me and said, uh, we were talking about hiring scores from last year. Um, we had hundred percent accuracy in our third grade, um, all forty-five kids. And we are talking about it and she said, I think we're the only school corporation in, uh, in the whole entire state with hundred percent. The very next day, uh, Mr. Shepherd and I, Mr. Shepherd received an email about us, uh, needing to go to a education gala down in Indianapolis last Friday. Um, and it didn't tell us what we were there for, but it said, make sure you bring your second, third grade teachers in here and you're added into it. So Mrs. Martin and her husband, uh, Christine and myself, Mr. Shepherd and his wife, and, uh, Mrs., Ms. Smith, went down, our second grade teacher, went down on Friday. Um, there were about four hundred people there total. Um, and it was just a, it's, Dr. Jenner is really trying to create a buzz with education in the state of Indiana. And, uh, it was a really well put together night. Um, and so they got to the early literacy and they're giving out these awards and, uh, we received the award as the only school corporation in the state of Indiana with a perfect score on hiring training. Um, coming with that award is up to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of great money that we've already received from this.
Wow.
So that night they gave out four point two million, um, total. Um, and so we were, we were one of, I would say maybe twenty-five schools there. I, I don't think, that might, that might be too many.
I'll tell you. Less than fifteen.
Less than fifteen.
We're less than fifteen representative schools in the state.
Um, so it was, uh, I mean, it was a red carpet affair. It was, uh, it was, it was a very enjoyable night. Um, and just to be recognized like that, um, and Mrs. Martin, everything that she's done the last, you know, twenty-some years that she's been here.
I wish she was here now, so we can.
Mrs. Martin, uh, I'm really saying Mr. Clifford as well, um, being in the specialized room last year.
Thank you.
Getting us across that finish line. Um, our, also our Title I teacher that time, Mr. Cook helped us get across the finish line with some of those. So, um, it's a really great night that we had. Um, and so it's a very good positive for, for tri-township.
Yeah, a big positive.
Yep.
Any other local schools?
Um.
John, John.
John would have individual teacher.
Yeah.
Recognized for something.
Uh, that's most points at the, in the learning lab. So the, the learning lab is like a.
Yeah.
Program or, uh, PD for teachers. The only Lake County school I think was hammered in that for a career readiness award.
Derek.
That for not to report in county school.
Yeah. Um, West Lafayette got an excellence in STEM award. Mr. Clifford's working on that now for us for next time. Um. Elkhart High School had an award for something. I'm gonna pass these out because I'm not even sure Brian has this. But what they, they kind of teased us a little bit on Friday night. It was a, truly, we learned what a gala is. Uh, we had to look up to figure out how we were supposed to dress. And I think we pulled it off pretty nicely. Um, but in our category, it was awarded up to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So based on student enrollment, based on this, based on that. And they were throwing out up to half a million dollars for some of these big schools. So we were going away thinking, okay, we're, you know, we're gonna get seventeen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Today I got an email and it looks to me like we're getting a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Wow.
So we'll pass, pass this news release out from the DOE.
Did Mrs. Martin and them get anything special for she was, for them?
They had a great time in Indy. We did five. I don't have enough of these for everybody. We've got a bigger crowd tonight than usual.
Thank you.
Great.
But you guys share what I've got there.
That has been bad. Thank you for all the reference.
Yes.
Thank you guys very much.
It really was a great honor. So, um, there's a lot, a lot of pictures still yet to come our way from the DOE. And we got some good pictures that we're, uh, getting good put out there. We have a website. We'll get stuff continuing on Facebook and different things like that. But yeah, it was great. And I was very happy for, uh, both teachers and, and also Brian.
Right.
Everybody that's out of Canton. So good.
Brian, thank you. We all, thank you.
Certainly our, uh, our pre-K teacher.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah. Oh, no question. You're exactly right. Brian, anything else?
Uh, I'll just add a couple more things.
Okay.
So last June, uh, we ended up applying for the three E grant, um, it's very competitive grant. Um, and so we ended up getting that grant. Um, we got just over forty-two thousand dollars in that grant. Um, and we are using all of that towards our, uh, STEM and engineering programs.
That's great. That's great.
So we, uh, recently, hopefully they'll be there soon, uh, we have four three D pairs coming. Um, we have purchased a laser cutter, um, that Mr. Shepherd, uh, Mr. Clifford's been, uh, using quite a bit lately, trying to figure out what we can do with it. So we have all that going on. Um, and then I also know our, we have our new art teacher that just started. Uh, we've been speaking with her yesterday. Uh, she's got a photography club, an art club back building again. Um, she's in county duals at the same time.
Good.
That's great. That's good to hear.
She's, uh, really excited about that. Um, and then just a shout out to our staff. Um, they've been very flexible these first four weeks of school. Putting everyone in one building. Um, there's a lot of excitement, but there was also some just little details we had to work out. And, uh, I just appreciate everything that they're doing, um, and the hard work that they put in every day. So.
Brian, last month, did we get to talk about Mr. Lance's kids down in Indy?
I don't think so.
Maybe between the two of you? Let the board know about that.
I'm back to school tonight. I took, uh, three kids down to Indianapolis and they participated in Impact Band, which is strictly for middle school students. And they got to perform in the opening ceremony for Drum Corps International World Finals on the Lucas Oil Stadium with Al Ched, who is a former trumpeter for Dave Letterman.
Wow, that's great.
They're down there two, was it two days at a time?
Yeah.
Two days at a time.
Thank you for all your effort.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's see. We talked about those buses. Um, I wanted to point out, I believe the date was, um, on the twenty-second of August. I know when we, when we're making this move up here, some of the questions that swirl around, do we have enough parking space? Do we have enough lunch to eat? And so I wanted to answer that question. Um, at nine forty in the morning on August twenty-second, I counted at that time of the day, I counted forty, no, twenty-four open parking spaces upfront. So we're, we're in good shape on, on parking currently for the school day. Again, for event parking, you've never been good. So we got work to do in that regard someday. In the lunchroom here, we can seat forty more students in the third lunch, which is the, the largest lunch.
Seven through twelve.
Seven through twelve. We still have forty additional seats that can be available for kids. So we got, we got room. In those two regards, we got room for the, the plus ten kids to be a plus, plus a lot more. If it keeps growing at that rate, classroom space, I might not be able to answer to the affirmative on that. But it's the problem we all want, right? So, so that's a good thing.
I was still talking with high schoolers. We had a few events over the weekend and they were all very happy. I mean.
Sure seemed like it does.
I've been very, very happy that we moved and, you know, even the ones that had been long-term in the process. You know, elementary, I think they were very pleased.
Good. Good. That's good feedback. Um, the other thing I want to touch base about, and I think there was a little bit of conversation that maybe started right at the start of the meeting or before. But, um, just to kind of try to keep the group abreast of some of the things that Brian and I have wanted to bring at by way of putting two communities and two schools and, and the joint of that. But, yeah, I made sure the lights were on with our two entryway boxes that kind of have, on the left side of the gym doors, we've got a lacrosse memorabilia box. And on the right side of the gym doors, we have a wantata memorabilia. Some, some pretty old items in there, some a little more recent, but a kind of a mix that shows that, you know, there was two entities here. And now we're one tri-township. Um, update, uh, the, the pictures that are currently still down here in the cafeteria. We're in the process of getting those digitized. My plan is to, uh, take those through the Costco as a program where they will digitize those. And then you'll see in the back of the cafeteria, we've got two TVs installed back there. Other TVs around the building that we are going to be able to scroll those pictures and have those showing at all times. We've, uh, we are in the. We've, uh, we are in the works of contacting the library here in Wannatah to potentially look at ways to display the physical pictures, rather than put them all back up here in the same way that they were. Uh, so, yeah, we're doing, doing some things differently, doing some things with a bit of an update. But just want to try to keep you, um, informed of that each step of the way. Am I leaving anything out there, Brian, that you can think of? Okay, all right. Questions or thoughts on that? If not.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I'll second it.
All in favor.
Aye.